I'd like to call the meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and天地正正， We have no written communication. Have we had any board or committee updates, meetings since the last meeting? Alright, we have no written communication here. Right in and super.
Well, thank you. I'm pleased to welcome members from Turner Construction and Newbury Art Architectural, as well as our director of facilities, Mark Grandpaugh, and Mrs. Zinski here to talk about Phase 3 of our Capitol construction project, which you just had the pleasure of viewing firsthand. Welcome.
Are we able to set this up?
Yes.
For noise, it's so loud enough. Alright. So, is it possible to get the lights maybe so we can see this all the way? Okay, no, no. Alright, awesome. Just want to make sure you can see what it looks like before. So, just a little background, we began work on February 28th, disassembling the serving line that was currently in the cafeteria and kitchen space. And we created the temporary kitchen over in the south gym area. So, we really like to thank the high school staff and staff are working with us to get into that space ahead of time and give us as much time as possible to work within the kitchen and cafeteria. There was an extreme amount of asbestos and abatement removal, and just the timeframe alone for that activity was about two and a half months. So, that alone, getting it as soon as February helped us incredibly. So, we started on February 28th, and by March 16th, the school closed, and we were able to go full force with additional workers who had got, who had been shut down from other projects. So, it actually was a win-win for us in that sense. So, it helped there. Later on, it was a little bit difficult with some of the manpower, getting materials onsite, but the initial startup was a great place to be. So, this view right here is where, when we walked into the cafeteria earlier, the wood slat ceiling is now here, like you can see. So, the kids were eating in a space where ceiling tile had fallen, there were exposed piping, things of that sort, and to bring them into a space like this, I'm really excited to see everybody on Thursday. So, we had intricate wood ceilings that concealed all the exposed piping that you can see there. All of that is now accessible, so if the maintenance staff wants to get in there, they have no problem doing so, and we'll have labels and things of that sort so they can service it. The space, as you can see, is more developed and spaced out so that it can be used for, I know there's a cafe space over here Tony was talking about, using the other space on the other side for maybe board meetings or classrooms, small instruction. So, the way it was not laid out has really developed a space that I think is a lot more usable than the original. So, this is just another view. Let me see. As you can see, and over on the left-hand side, a lot of the, you can see the old windows there, and on the right, how much more light is now able to come into that space. In addition to that, a lot of the changes in height will help with the noise. So, the ceiling, the ceiling acoustics will help create smaller intimate spaces where you're not going to hear as much noise travel from one space to the next. And then in addition to that, there was additional HVAC and fresh air that we were feeling wrong in the space earlier. So, all of that will really translate especially into this space here. So, this is a view of the serving line on the left. So, before students would enter in the center, split off, and there was a small salad bar. I know they had some warm trays, some pizza stations. The new serving line has additional, there's hot bar, cold bar, grab-and-go pizza station, sandwich station. And it's easy to be able to modify the use of this as well. So, I know the designer worked really hard with the old kitchen manager and as well as Tracy when she took over, just to ensure that this was going to be a space that they were going to have future growth and potential with, to work with, you know, whatever food and things of that sort will come. So, this is another view of that serving line. And then over on the right-hand side here, we're moving towards the back of the school, where that small fireplace section is, so there'll be a monitor over here as well as some small chairs. Just another space that was broken up in this new layout. So, back in the caf, or the kitchen, I don't know how many of you had the opportunity to go back there, but the kitchen staff was working in a very confined space. It was extremely narrow and not a lot of room to move things about. So, with the new layout, they extended out probably about 15 feet further. It did become shorter, but it created an open space that will give them a lot better feel for, just movement throughout the kitchen. Only two pieces of equipment were reused, which were new. So, really, the new space has all brand-new tables, the appliances are all brand-new as well. And then, I know that right now they're moving in and trying to figure out exactly what they're going to keep and what they're going to get rid of, but we've had really great feedback from the kitchen staff, just saying that they have so much, so much more than they ever thought they needed, and so I guess that's a good place to be in. This is another view of the hood. So, on the left is the original, on the right is the new. So, very similar. The technology doesn't change too much, but the equipment is brand-new, it's clean. The added benefit is this floor trough, which will be used for the kettle, so that's a direct dump of all the water right into there. And then on top of that, additional lighting for that space. Now, the basement corridor here, this is where the art and home ec rooms are. So, on the left-hand side, you can see just the ground old flooring. It was about two inches thick that we had removed, and that also contained asbestos. So, between that and then within the classrooms, the floor continued, and there was abatement of the ceiling, the plaster ceiling as well. Luckily, this corridor had been done in a previous project, which helped us save some time on the schedule. So, on the right shows some of the progress. As you saw, as you walked through the space today, that's been cleaned up even more so with paint and ceiling tiles. The bookstore, that space will get wrapped up shortly. Sometimes we have to prioritize our time in making sure that the space is able for students and staff to occupy, things like that, taking a little bit to the wayside, but that will get wrapped up very soon. On the left-hand side is the old home ec room. So, mismatched furniture, old cabinets that were cracked and just abused over time. The space was really sectioned into one teaching space and then the cooking, whereas now you'll have tables that will able, you know, the teacher will be able to do teaching instruction over near where the kids will be cooking, as well as the other side. So, that gives them more versatility there. Where this picture is taken is where that demonstration table is, so directly behind it will be a monitor to, for instructional space, there will be a camera, so that they can actually show what's being prepared, and the kids can see from that view as well. And then the art room here. This poor space between just how much was in there and all the different flooring, there was tile popping, old trenches that were along the perimeter wall that had started popping up over time, as there were old steam lines in there that heated up. That was all gutted, the ceiling was removed, the new windows. This is a progress shot, so really, this was about a week ago, so you can just see how quickly progress changes in just a week. Now, there's furniture in that space. There'll be a few cabinets that are placed on, or sorry, a countertop that will get placed this week. So, all in all, the space will be wrapped up very soon. That's it. Any questions?
I just wanted to say, so, handouts that you had in front of you, that was taken probably at the beginning of the last week of August, and we walked this space today, so you could just see how much has really taken shape over the past eight, four days. So, just to show why and that it's put in place, you know, towards that little moment. And again, just a beautiful space, and the value of our team, and the right team as well, and the pitchback, I just want to do a few of these, Mark Grandpaugh and his team as well, and you are as well, and you have the pitchback offices, making things happen and clearing hurdles, and allowing the progress to happen and take place smoothly. I thought things went very smoothly this year, considering the fact that our place isn't kind of that competitive, and we're really trying to do a lot of things, and we're a lot expedited, and materials to keep it exploring the job. One thing that was super important that Brittany mentioned earlier, was being able to be identified as a essential workplace, which we were able to establish uniquely, which was great. So, that just really allowed us to accelerate the schedule. You can tell by the last couple of months of school, just we're kind of catching up. All of a sudden, they said, "Yeah, let's go," and at that point, we're already in July, so a lot of the workers started getting stretched, and we were able to really bring it home right before that happened. So, I just want to sort of backseat down into the first straight also, and I found a lot of things that happened so.
Yeah, really significant transformation in that space. Wide open, bright, welcoming, warm. So, what you don't see is a lot of hard work and long hours behind the scenes. I can't remember how many planned meetings and hours that go into this, but with young, right architects, our teachers who are occupying those spaces, our employees who work in the cafeteria and kitchen, Mark, everybody, it's really been a great team effort. All of the ideas have been captured and put into the design, and I think it's turned out better than I expected. Fantastic.
Do you have any additional questions?
Mr. Wheaton is here to talk about the guidance we received Friday night at 8:00 on fall sports for this school year.
I actually received it at 7:00, you received it at 8:00. You don't have a sense of humor through all things, right? Sometimes it drives my wife crazy. Alright, so, you all should have a handout that looks like this. This is the presentation that's up on the screen. Nothing flashy. It came out to me at 7:00 on Friday night, so I expect some time over the weekend to deciphering the information.
We got it at 6:45.
It is a 50-page document from the New York State Public High School Athletic Association in relation to the document from the New York State Department of Health titled "Sports and Recreation During the COVID-19 Public Health Emergency." So, a few goals for tonight. One, to update you on where we currently stand with athletics. Two, to give you some updates regarding to New York State Department of Ed and NISPA, New York State Public High School Athletics. An overview of the guidance documents which we've received so far. And then lastly, I'm looking for some guidance, we're looking for some guidance on how we're going to move forward. Section 6 has sent out a survey with some different scenarios for us to consider. So, I'll jump right in. Take my mask off here. Alright, so our current status, we're on hold until the September 21st. There have been no practices, no captain-led practices since the end of last winter season. We've been completely shut down for at least six months now from last March. Our coaches have done a phenomenal job of connecting with kids. We've asked them to do that. I truly believe that they have done that with our kids in many different ways. This past spring was a testament to that from all the different activities and events that we still did, even though we were remote. Fall sports sign-up forms have gone out. They opened up on August 21st. It's typically 30 days prior to the start of the season. In addition, the parent portal in Aspen is open as well for parent consent forms. So, what I'm getting at is we're continuing to try to move forward as much as possible with the information that we have. The APP process, which is the process for seventh and eighth graders to play off the JV and varsity level, has also been in process. Fitness testing is scheduled for September 14th and 15th. Letters have gone home to parents to request their permission. Letters will be sent home via email tomorrow, allowing those kids to come fitness test on the 14th and 15th. Obviously, social distancing and screening, et cetera, will take place. Sports physicals are currently being rescheduled. Those are for students that do not have access to or have not been able to get a sports physical with their own PCP, their primary care physician. We will be offering those for our students as well. They look a little different. They may be scheduled accordingly for social distancing, and we have one student obviously in the nurse's office at the time, but we'll make that happen for those students that need that. Continuing, our coaching staff, we have four new coaches that will be joining Amherst this fall. In addition to some movement within our football program, our two JV coaches are anticipating to move up to the varsity level. We have a varsity fall coaches meeting actually tomorrow to review some of these guidance documents. In addition to Section 6 was planned a meeting tomorrow as well to review the guidance document, give some guidance, or some recommendations going forward, which I was told today. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't think it works.
Doesn't work. It's been six months, you know, since I've had a meeting. Alright, here we go. Section 6 was supposed to meet tomorrow, but I think they're pushing that off till Friday. Again, all of this is still kind of up in the air. The Booster Club is planning a meeting on September 14th, which is our next meeting to plan for the school year and discuss guidance documents as well, what are we going to do as a Booster Club. Again, we're trying to move forward as much as we can. The ECIC League, which is what we're a part of, and all fall coaches will meet tentatively on September 16th, again, to review guidance document and our decision to move forward. And then lastly, we have a tentative pre-season meeting scheduled for September 18th. Again, all of this information is contingent upon a September 21st start date. So, a lot of dates coming up, a lot of information that needs to get disseminated, which we'll be ready to do, but time is of the essence and some decisions need to be made. New York State Ed updates, all of our coaches are First Aid CPR ABD trained. We had a training last week on Superintendent Conference Day, so we're all squared away there. The New York State Bonafide Student Regulation pertains to students that are on remote or hybrid instruction, as long as they're enrolled in three core classes plus physical education, they are eligible for interscholastic athletics. The New York State, New York State Ed determined that districts are not required to provide additional transportation. So, there was a discussion about what do we do for students that are on remote instruction or on hybrid instruction, how do we get them to practices? The New York State Department of Ed stated that it's not up to the district to provide that additional transportation beyond what we typically do for the game contents. And then lastly, New York State Department of Ed is allowing physical examinations to be received from the 1819, or accepted from the 1819 school year, 1920 school year, as long as an interval health history form is submitted from the parent, which is basically a questionnaire form within 30 days of the start of the season. So, some changes took place to try to move this forward in the right direction. New York State Public High School Athletic Updates. Practice requirements have changed. Typically, six practices for all sports but football, that increased to 10 for health and safety reasons. For football, it has increased from 10 to 12. So, just something to pay close attention to as they, as we continue to push this even, that closes that window on how much time we have for contests and games. But for health and safety reasons, increase in practices. They waived the seven-day consecutive rule, which basically means that you can practice or play seven days a week, which currently it is six days a week, so with one day rest. And that will start on October 12th, and the purpose behind that was to be able to get your games and practices in in a shorter season. League of section play held locally within our region, and we stated today from the New York State Public High School Athletics, that play should consist of playing competition within your own section. So, we shouldn't be going to Syracuse or to Rochester. We're going to keep it here in Western New York initially until at least October 19th, or a later date is given. There will be currently no fall, or fall regional and state championships, so it's all local plays in the fall. The winter and the spring are still up in the air of whether or not those championships will take place. And then lastly, from NISPA, winter sports were pushed back two weeks to November 30th. Again, that's two, additional time for fall sports. One statement from Dr. Zayas, he is the Executive Director of the New York State Public High School Athletics Association, also called NISPA. Participation in interscholastic athletics is certainly voluntary for both the individuals and the schools. The NISPA recognizes school district superintendents and Board of Education has the authority and autonomy to administer their district's athletic programs as they deem appropriate. So, within the guidance that we are given, you all have the autonomy and the authorities to deem what we feel is appropriate for our同学们 at Amherst. They have outlined sports into three different categories, low risk, moderate risk, and higher risk, and that risk is associated with the ability to maintain physical distance, shared equipment, and cleaning and disinfecting of equipment between users. On the screen, you'll see the sports that we offer here at Amherst. The ones that are highlighted in yellow are the higher-risk sports, which are competitive cheerleading, football, and boys and girls volleyball. To the left are our high school sports, and to the right are our middle school sports that we offer. You can see currently we offer 19 JV and varsity teams in the fall, and eight modified teams at the middle school in the fall. So, the current guidance document speaks of lower-risk and moderate-risk sports as being able to participate in practice and competition starting on September 21st. Those higher-risk sports that I previously mentioned, football, competitive cheer, and volleyball, currently may begin practice but may not take part in competition until further notice, up until the drop-dead date of December 31st, 2020. I'm going to run through some of the main nuts and bolts of the NISPA document. It is online, it is on our website, or will be on our website if you want to see the full document, but I'm just going to run through some of the main things. You'll see themes as we go through these. So, generally speaking, for all participants, obviously, things like washing hands, acceptable face coverings, clean and disinfect frequently touched equipment and surfaces, six feet of physical distancing. I've learned to say the physical distancing lately because we want kids to be social, right, in athletics and physical education, so the term physical distancing. And then establish a hydration plan for student athletes. Those big water jugs out of the football fields are not going to work anymore, right? The big water jugs behind the bench in volleyball is not going to work anymore. So, how are we going to manage that to make sure it stays hydrated? Again, you're going to see similar themes as we go through this. So, for student athletes, the main themes or considerations, physical distancing, acceptable face coverings, their own workout clothing, mouth guards in the mouth at all times, bring their own water bottle labeled, provide their own supplies to the extent possible. Obviously, a $300 football helmet isn't reasonable, but a mouth guard would be. Shower at home before and after games. These are just some considerations from the NISPA. For coaches, same kind of thing, six feet, face covering, clear expectations for student athletes and parents, so everybody's on the same page. Obviously, no contact anyway, hugging, high fives, handshaking, et cetera. For us athletic administrators, there are a number of things that we need to go through to make sure that our students, our coaches, our spectators are safe at all of these venues. Things like staggered practice times, game times, limit game day rosters, that plays a part into how many people you may have on the sideline, how many individuals you're putting on a bus. Teams should be equipped with their own medical supplies, their own cleaning, disinfecting supplies, locker room policies to reduce density, communicating in advance with all of our officials to make sure that they understand where to go on certain, in our facilities. Reduce density on the bus, train coaches on proper use of cleaning and disinfecting, which we've already done with our physical education staff as well. Our studio staff has done a nice job to run through some of those protocols. For spectators, so as it relates to our community members, our parents, grandparents, et cetera, six feet as always, cloth, face coverings, disinfecting your athletes' equipment after practice and games. Here's a big one, limiting two spectators per roster athlete. So, again, it's that whole approach to reduce density. So, if we're going to have a football game, if we're able to get to that point, it would be two spectators per rostered player. So, that's just something that we have to manage and we have to monitor. And then obviously, we'd follow all school, section, and league policies. So, if we have some specific school district policies, we adhere to those. If there's specific ones to the section or to our league, you have to adhere to those. The part of that that's very important is because it's not just within our school district, we travel to other school districts, we all have to collaborate together to have, they're very similar, if not the same expectations. If I go to Star Point, it needs to be very similar, if not the same. If Orchard Park comes to us, it needs to be very similar, and that's where our league and our section needs to get on the same page. For officials, it's basically the same, same kind of deal. One thing to note for officials here is they are responsible for game management. They are not responsible for the social distancing, the PPE, the cleaning and sanitizing, that's a piece, they're responsible for the game management. So, that, that piece of athletics will be on athletic administrators, our game management staff, and those, those workers that we have. Facilities, so Mark Grandpaugh's crew, limiting capacity to 50%, six feet of social distancing, waiting lines, we saw this past spring with graduations from other events that we had, they did a really nice job of signage, marking out certain areas where folks can go. I envision the same thing would be for athletics. Create a bidirectional foot traffic, one way in, one way out, clearly identifying which gate to come in and which gate to leave. And then if we do get to the point where we sell tickets, to have them contact us, which we've already partnered with tickets, which is online tickets that we use. And there's also a way that we can track who's coming and going and maintaining that two spectators per contest. Screening, so daily health screenings, which we already have in place for our kids and our staff across the district. The piece that comes into play is how about students that are on remote, or they're on hybrid and they're not getting school day that day? We still are required to screen those students in some capacity. Our coaches will need to have a roster of who's on cohort one, cohort two, et cetera, and we'll have to track that accordingly, and really do a good job of keeping track of those cohorts of kids for practices and games at all times. Alright, sports-specific considerations, I am not going to bore you with all of the details of it, it is in the document, but just one example here, in the sport of cross-country, meat should consider using staggered or wave interval starts with a one minute in between. So, again, just a sports-specific strategy to help reduce density, create space of social or physical distancing, et cetera. Again, that's all written in the NISPA document. That is the piece tomorrow, what I mean with our varsity fall coaches, that we will go through in detail so that they understand what the expectations are for their specifics for. So, what are the next steps with athletics? Complete the Section 6 interscholastic survey, which you have a copy of, and I'll go through that in a minute. Evaluate the Section 6 decision, which we're expecting by the end of the week, and then continue to prepare, educate, inform. then continue to prepare, educate, inform our community, our student athletes, our spectators, parents, et cetera, as we attempt to move forward with interscholastic athletics. So a lot to digest, I expect, what kind of a weekend digesting these documents. I think it's a, you know, at times it's a contentious topic right now in the media and where we're going with athletics. We see a lot going on with collegiate athletics. We know that kids benefit from sports. That is, that is proven through research, research. We know it's good for kids, but we also have to be aware and cognizant of health and safety as we're, as we're reopening schools as well. So with that, Section Six has sent out last night a survey looking for athletic directors, superintendents, Board of Education to weigh in on some of this information. So I'll just kind of go through it quickly, it's this form right here. There are four different or five different scenarios for us to consider.
And just to add, Section Six is made up of seventy-eight school districts. So they're trying to get information from each district and to get something out as it relates to this guidance that's a little consistent across the section. So they've given us four options and then an all-encompassing other. And Mr. Wheaton and I have looked at this and we think we have the option that we would put in as our survey response. It's not a vote per se, it's just a survey for them to consider, but we also wanted to make sure that the board was on board before we respond.
Okay. So option one would be very similar to what I just presented, September twenty-one start date. Our higher-risk sports would be allowed to practice, our low-risk and our moderate-risk sports would be able to practice and compete in games. Option two would be, again, September twenty-one start date, those lower-risk and moderate-risk sports would be allowed to participate in practice and contests. Our higher-risk sports would not be. The section would be looking to move those sports to possibly another season. Option three would be to push back the start of the season one week, September twenty-eighth, to allow for more time for schools to reopen their buildings and get kids in the building, but it follows the same, same strategy as option one, where all sports would start, higher-risk would be practiced only to start the season. Option four, again, starting on September twenty-eighth, one week later, low-risk, moderate-risk sports are clear to go, with higher-risk sports on hold for the time being until a further decision is made to either move the season to the winter or spring. And then lastly, option five, which is, which is an other, right, leaves it open to some interpretation. From, from my conversations with colleagues within the area, within the section, option five has been discussed as the potential for moving all three seasons to a condensed season that the NISPA had proposed back a month or two ago, which was winter season starting on January fourth, going through to March thirteenth, fall season starting on March first, going through till May eighth, and then the spring season starting on April fifth to June twelfth. Again, number five is open to interpretation, but from speaking to a handful of my colleagues, that seemed to be probably the best suitable option for an other option if we were not going to start this fall. I can tell you that Section Six is hopeful to start this fall, but they're looking to survey all of their, their member schools.
What would be the downfall of the condensed season plan? And you have a handout that outlines that, that you've been given, so it's more detailed on the back where it has the seasons. What would be the downfall if our section went with the condensed plan but the rest of the state didn't?
Right, so the downfall of our section went with the condensed season plan would we would most likely eliminate ourselves from any regional or state championships.
For winter and spring?
For winter and spring. We're all, we've already, that's already out of question for fall. Winter and spring, regional and state championships are already being planned, you know, tentatively planned, but we would most likely eliminate ourselves from that opportunity. One of the positives of a condensed season, given that we're back to both normal by that time, is every team would have an opportunity to play. The risk we take in the fall a little bit here is if we get started and, you know, we, you know, God forbid, we have to shut down remotely, that season may get either pushed or go away entirely. So there's a little bit of risk there on, you know, on what our decision is.
It seems like the other issue though is, let's just say you're a three-sport athlete, you have to pick a sport, or if you're a two-sport athlete, you have to pick a sport.
Right. Yeah, so there's overlap. If you look at the, the schedule of the proposed condensed season, there is overlap. So to your point, student athletes may have to pick one or two sports with that, with that being said, whereas our current model, if we, if we were to take place in the fall, we would try to keep our, our system the same where you could play two and three sports and not have an issue with it. We also do have many two and three-sport coaches as well. I can think of many coaches on our, on our football staff that coach lacrosse. Mr. Kenzie, one that just comes to mind right now here, Kenzie, coaches football and lacrosse that might run into an issue if, say, the football season moves to the spring. So, you know, there's, there's a number of factors. It's not going to be perfect. At the end of the day, we're trying to provide as many opportunities for kids to be active, for them to participate, to have, you know, the, the most beneficial high school experience as possible. It's going to look different, but we know that this, this year's never ending.
Well, the reason I was mentioning the time that I received the guidance on Friday was in, as a compliment to Mr. Wheaton, because we expected it around one o'clock Friday and it was delayed. And in anticipation of it coming out on Friday, we had put this on the agenda because we know it's a topic that many people are interested in. And I want to give him credit for the work he pulled together over the long weekend for tonight's meeting in not only reading and deciphering the document, but being able to present it to you, all of you. So our response that we're recommending for this survey is response three. We think we should move forward with competition and play for the low-risk and moderate-risk, and then allow the high-risk to practice. When we said practice, we're talking about conditioning mostly. You know, football, we don't expect them to be out there scrimmaging each other, that would defeat the purpose, but they might be needed two or three days a week in doing conditioning work safely in a socially-distanced manner. But we do think we need a little bit more time, given the timeline that we have from the guidance coming out last Friday to September twenty-first being only a few days away here, two weeks away. So we think if Section Six were to proceed by buying a little bit more time and then moving forward, we'd be able to, you know, be a little bit more prepared.
I foresee Section Six moving forward on fall sports. I do. I, I think this is a good compromise that it buys us a little bit more time as we try to reopen our schools and get kids into our building first. It buys my office a little bit more time to make sure that we have, all of these communication plans are out to us, to our parents, but it affords us the opportunity for our coaches to connect with our kids, which is our number one priority, right? So even the sport of football, volleyball, and cheerleading, it still opens us up for the ability to, even do, I'll call them off-season, open gym-style workouts, where it might only be a couple days a week, but that's okay because they're connecting with kids and, and keeping them active in some capacity.
So the governor has approved a September twenty-one start for fall sports. As a section, I think it benefits us to be on the same page. So I, that is why the section is taking this survey. Does anyone have any objections to us responding to this survey with option three, knowing that there may be something else that, that may happen?
It doesn't actually bind this.
No.
It's, it's simply a survey, it's not even a vote, they're just collecting data, but they wanted, they wanted districts to be aware of the conversations that were going on so they could be informed on the decision to move forward.
So is Section Six going to come out and make a decision then on what the date is?
That's the plan, to make it a sub.
If the majority, let's just say, for example, choose option one, will they then push that out as, and we will just follow what they say?
We always have the autonomy to do what we deem appropriate. So that would be a conversation that we would have to have at that time when they render their decision.
But I think we would, I mean, most likely we would follow it. I don't think that puts us in a very favorable position.
Well, it does put you in a, it puts you in a tough position because if, you know, if teams are practicing from September twenty-one and we wait till September twenty-eight, we're, we're six days behind the eight ball on, on, you know, practicing and getting ready for competition.
Yeah. So to answer your question, Paul, yes, we would, after the section makes a decision, we'll follow it. Now is just our opportunity to put input into the decision.
The only issue I foresee is that the one sport that doesn't have weights is golf. And they're not going to be able to finish this season at least, I mean, they're already starting so late.
Golf and tennis are two that will struggle. Fortunately for golf though, there are no practice requirements for golf that consider training, so they do not have to go ten days. They could literally have a one-day tryout and compete the next day.
Yeah, they were, I mean, I guess they don't have an official plan yet, but I guess that was already, you know, the thought process, but I just wonder if there is some kind of hybrid thing where there could also be a spring session or something?
I can tell you, I spoke to our, our league executive director today, and there was conversation about boys' golf taking place in the spring, which is actually the way that the state runs it. The way that we run it in our league is boys play in the fall, and if they, if they qualify for the state championship, they have the week to the spring to play, so there's some flexibility there as well. I can bring that to the league to discuss.
So there is a lot of discussion that needs to happen at the section level and the league level. They're asking for us to return this tomorrow by noon, so, you know, we didn't want to just, we wanted to inform the public and all of you, but our, at this point, we were leaning towards selecting option three, as long as there's no objection, knowing that there's, you know, seventy-eight districts that will be responding and the section will take that information.
Does anyone have any objections?
No.
But there is some discussion that they can, they might move sports. They were talking about maybe moving football to the spring, baseball or softball to the fall now. So all of those decisions are still forthcoming for this gathering input. So thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Wheaton.
Can I ask you a question?
Oh, yeah.
I saw a reference in the paper to cross-country field hockey and soccer, playing with masks.
Yeah. So that question, we had a, I had a Zoom meeting today with Robert Zayas from New York State Public High School Athletics, he answered that question. The, the state DOH guidance document references all individuals should wear masks if they cannot maintain six feet or greater. For sports, the way that they referenced it, I should read it directly here, but basically the way that he explained it was if student athletes cannot tolerate a mask while playing or practicing, they do not have.
Even if there's not a distance.
Even if there's not a distance.
The guidance says they wear a mask when practicing games.
The guidance says they should wear a mask anytime six feet cannot be maintained. If they cannot tolerate a mask during physical activity because of physically exerting a heavy, thinking of sports, soccer, up and down the field all the time, wearing a mask might not be tolerable, then I don't have to.
Who's the judge? It's going to be my son, say, and I can't remember.
Your son said, Coach so-and-so, I can't, Coach Nuneo, I, I just, I don't feel comfortable wearing a mask, so just say maybe not wear a mask.
Yeah, this is six feet, so I will.
Correct, that's directed from the DOH.
Okay, thank you.
Like everything with this pandemic, there's a lot of decisions to be made, a lot of guidance to sit through, and a lot of communication that needs to take place within our staff and also within our community. So thank you for all the work you've done so far, and, and I'm sure we'll have more information in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. I wanted to give you a pre-opening update. Where we've been since the last time we met in July, you've had the opportunity to see, you've had the opportunity to see our physical buildings and all of the work that went into preparing them for the arrival of our students and staff. And we've also had a lot of work that's been ongoing in the Office of Curriculum, and we had, today was our fourth superintendent conference day, three last week and one today in preparation for our students' arrival on Thursday. Tomorrow, as you may recall, is the orientation day for K six and nine, students in grades K six and nine. Dr. Shanahan, if you'd like to join me, that would be great. So as you will recall, you know, our planning process included several committees. The building-based ones focused on health and safety, while our social-emotional learning team focused on social-emotional well-being, and our teaching and learning team focused on professional development and teaching and learning. So within the building-based safety component teams, they focus on those five categories of PPE, screening, communication, training, physical distancing, hygiene. There's been videos that have been produced for training kids in respiratory hygiene, hand hygiene, mask-wearing, proper mask disposal, social distancing. You've seen the signage, all Amber's branded signage in our schools, so we feel very comfortable to roll that out with our students when they return this week. Staff training started last week, the same categories, respiratory hygiene, hand hygiene, PPE, Mike, am I missing a couple?
Screens.
Screening and symptom checks, which again, you've had a chance to see here at the board meeting. If you want to add just a couple items about the social-emotional committee and how that's rolling out with staff and students?
Yeah, it's, it's interesting. I know Lynn has some stuff in her slide too, so she can jump in, but I think the whole plan was to ensure that those first few days, the first few weeks, hence tomorrow, with our kindergarten, sixth, ninth grade, to allow, it's just, it's just time for kids, and not just kids and staff, to settle in and fit, so we focus on really more intense teaching and learning. And those days have been outstanding, the idea of folding in time, SCL time, so to speak, at every building and every grade throughout the day. So I know some principals talked a bit about it, like at the elementary level, early on, but even at the secondary level, those home bases, we're going to be talking about things we can do with kids, and all our teachers have been armed with activities and resources to work with kids so that they can engage them, they can feel attached to school again, and start their days off, not just their first few weeks, but every day moving forward, knowing that everything's different, everything's odd, they're not there with their friends, they're not there like a normal school day. And then there are, of course, our number of resources for our staff. I will say that we sent out a survey, not just, and many of you guys are parents, for our students to see how they're doing. Our, our social-emotional team, our social workers in particular, have already reached out to those families to check and see what's, of course, new in place for the school year starts. Same thing happened for staffs. We had about a half dozen staff actually asked for a little bit of help and guidance, so that they received that. We tried to do that before the start of school because we always want to be preventative and proactive so that when you start the school year, things are in place, and everyone feels, not just feels like they're in a good place, but also feels supported. We want, we want here, right, it's Ambers family. So those are some of the, the heavy hitters. We will also be doing other screening in the fall, about a month, then it's referred to as savers. So, and that is part of our fast bridge programs, we screen kids on reading, writing, and math, but we didn't screen kids on social-emotional learning and social-emotional development. So we certainly did some degree, and our social workers were highly involved with that, but this provides a very consistent way in which to respond to those. And only the last, it seems, students along the way over the past couple of years, the point is we're hard with this, is how can we better catch some of those kids, considering we're in a pandemic, a better time to do that than now? So that'll happen about a month into school. We've already done some screening from their parents and students, and then about a month in, after the kids sort of settle in, how can you adapt? Let's do a pretty touch base. And that'll also give the teachers time to learn about their students, they need to know them, they have their needs, and then they will be able to assess them and provide feedback to the DPS staff to see if they need to step in and provide more screening.
Yeah, so there was about a half-day professional development to get us started last week on the social-emotional turnkey training from our committees. And, you know, as you all know, the morning meeting and the home-based checking time will be, has been extended at all buildings to allow that Ally program to be implemented. So there's a small group for each, for an adult to connect with kids.
Don't we do that right? So on top of reopenings first, right, the safety came first because we want to make sure that our faculties can start from that, and then sure that our faculties can start from that and they have a full understanding of how schools are going to operate. Then we moved into the social-emotional across the days and then we went into instruction, trying to position instruction as important, but making sure that those other pieces were in place. So we have an infrastructure that has a foundational base where we have two learning management systems that are different because of the developmental appropriateness of them. So last year, we had all Google Classroom grades K through 12. So one of the problems with that is kids that are in kindergarten and first grade who can't communicate through keyboarding have a very difficult time working. And that puts extra work on families and parents, et cetera. Through CSO, kids can communicate through audio recording their voice. It's very simple. We watched kids do it. It was amazing. They can respond through image and words, which your kindergarten kids, that's the normal mode, to put those two different modalities together to communicate. It also has a direct connection to parents. So when students turn something in, the parents get an email. There's a way for parents and teachers to communicate directly in there. So we did purchase CSO as a learning management system for grades K through 2 with the option at third grade. And most of our third-grade teachers have stuck with Google Classroom, which developmentally makes sense, but you might see a CSO or two out there. So our 3 through 12 is Google Classroom. So our learning management systems are going to be nominally appropriate, CSO in K through 2-ish, a couple 3 in there, and then Google Classroom for 3 through 12. And then on top of that, the way that we can have synchronous work with our students will be to couple that with a Zoom video platform, which will then be linked and embedded into either Google Classroom or CSO. So that's the infrastructure and bottom. We knew, building principals work on this, if we could get our teachers confident in that platform before we got through these four days, that we could start okay and we would be in good footing. Because one of the things that happens with digital tools is they're like shiny pennies. We could do that, or we could do that, or we could... No. Rein it in. Let's get really good at our foundational pieces and then we're going to keep layering and adding and adding as we go through to different applications. So that is the foundational base. And then these were the types of questions the teachers wanted answers to and they kept asking us right before opening day started. So at the elementary level, what do you need a social-emotional check-in? With kids at home and kids at school, how am I going to do that? What does that look like? So we ran sessions with the teaching and learning committee at each level, got together the teachers and created some professional development for their colleagues, showing them what it would look like. So here I am in Zoom, how do I get my kids in? And I also have kids in front of me, what does that look like? So we operationalized that, the social-emotional check-ins that are daily. Also, remember in the elementary, we have the hybrid teaching, but the remote Wednesdays are asynchronous. So they wanted to know what are our expectations? How does that look? What are we supposed to post? Where are we supposed, all that information? So we went through those and answered those types of questions, modeling what that would look like, as well as our virtual teachers that are fully remote, look a little bit different. So they needed some information. And we also, by the way, added on extra professional development for our virtual academy because we wanted to make sure that they were shored up and ready to go. So they actually had an extra day on Friday and Monday to come in and work in getting their classrooms set up. Then for the middle and high school, they're home-based and homeroom. They wanted to go over the structure of what that would look like in a Google Classroom. And once again, the team led that. And then their model is a synchronous-concurrent hybrid teaching model, which means, right, the kids and the students are going to be, at home, are going to be in at the same time. Same thing, show, just show me, show me what that looks like. And so we did have some teams of teachers that run the teaching and learning committee do some demonstrations. And then there's still lots of questions. So then after that, we left a lot of work time where they could actually play with Zoom. They could, they got in and they started inviting each other. They started to look at what happens if we change our privacy settings. And so they started to work together in their adult teams to figure out, how am I going to let six people in when I have six people in front of me? Oop, I have to make sure that I, they mute. If they don't mute, we're going to have feedback. Oop, or we need to have our headphones on. So all of those logistics they were going through and practicing in their teams or in their departments based on middle school or high school. And we also talked about what expectations were around that remote Wednesday, what does that look like? We're still going to do that check-in, but then what are we expected to do? Where is the work supposed to be posted? Those types of things. So it was more of really changing our teaching into this digital space and not in an emergency this time. So if we want to be really good at this, what does it look like? And you're very, you know, I think our community is fortunate because we have a lot of type 8 high achievers and a lot of it was just showing. And then it was like, oh, that's what it, okay, we can do that. And then they went and practiced. The other thing is, our instructional model is essential elements of instruction. And so our teachers wanted to say, how does that fit with this digital learning space? So we did have self-committees work on that. So they actually took our instructional model, which I think is the strength of the district, is to have a common instructional model. And they talked about and showed, what does this look like in a digital space? And that also reduced anxiety for people that are perfectionists, like, oh, you mean I still have an anticipatory set? Yeah. And this is how you might do it. This is a tool you can use to do it. We talked about synchronously, a lot of times, the best time to use video is when you're modeling or giving information or input, right? That's what research says. So that would be a good time if you might want to record something. Why? Kids can go back and re-watch if they don't understand. They can rewind to specific points in time. So those were all kind of the what-ifs questions that we were answering throughout the different sessions over the days. The other thing we did, and we tried to keep this to a minimum, we have got fantastic digital tools to grow into, but we did go over a couple high utility ones. Because remember, our base is the infrastructure. If we can use our Google Docs, if we can use our form, if we can embed the video, all of that, we'll be okay. But some teachers wanted to know, what happens if I want to like have kids annotate a PDF? What happens if I want then, what happens if I want to model something on a PDF and then open it up for them to write on? So HAMIS is a tool for middle, it goes K to 12, but middle school and high school really wanted to get their hands on that and play with that. So we did run a session on that. One way we're trying to increase what we did from the spring to now is we didn't do something called guided reading, which is instructional reading, which is taking kids at the level they're at and pushing them to the next level in a supportive way. What we did do was a lot of independent reading because it was an emergency closure. Independent reading is excellent. Research says the number of minutes kids have eyes on text is directly proportional to their success as readers. So we knew if we got kids reading during this pandemic, we would at least be moving forward. But now we have time. So now we're saying, that's not good enough, right? Not for Amherst, not for our students. So we're going to add in a guided reading component. In the print-based version, the teachers currently use literacy footprints and they can come out with a digital partner. That's their twin, right? So now we have ways to use those same books with kids in digital contexts. That'll take a couple weeks to launch, but the teachers are getting comfortable with that right now. We're getting everybody on board. But that's a way that we are upping the ante from what we did in the spring in an emergency closure is we're going to hit kids at their sweet spot in their instructional need and reading and move that forward. And we're doing the same in math. In math, we made, we had two other professional developments for elementary that went on. We purchased NSYNC. Our current math program is Eureka Math. And Eureka Math has a twin now called NSYNC. And it follows the same, the same sequence as their print-based version. So now the teachers can use NSYNC if we go fully remote, if we're hybrid. Or let's say I teach something to my hybrid kids, but I want them the next day to go watch a video to see it again. They can see it again before they do their practice. So what NSYNC has is video content that can demonstrate all of the different concepts being taught. It has ways for kids to respond in PDFs, syllable PDFs, which was important that we didn't have access to last year. So that is something that we did share with the elementary teachers over these days. And then the guidance is asking us to assess gap. So we have got a lot of ways to do that for literacy already built in and we felt like we needed to add something for math besides the formative assessments that we're already using. So EQUIP is a three-module assessment that can be given before every Eureka module starts. And it takes the standards and it will, or the concepts that will lead to the meeting of the standards. And it will tell us if our, how our kids are performing up and below, or above and below three grade levels. So the concept is measured if they're three grade levels below or above, we'll know, which means then we can differentiate our instruction to meet those students' needs. So those are some of the digital tools. There's a lot more, but we tried not to overwhelm and we tried to get Google Classrooms up, get CSO Classrooms up, and get a couple of the high utility digital tools out for our teachers. And most importantly, we're doing everything, Jeff's turnaround so quickly, we tried to message the fact that, I call it, sorry, Penn State or at heart, this is a grand experiment. Nobody has pushed the limits on the technology the way we are. Nobody has pushed it out in the timeframe that we're doing it in. So we are going to hit things and we are going to have things that we're going to have to pivot and change. And we told them that it's important that we are here for you. If we need to change something, we'll change it. We need to have open lines of communication. We need to be flexible and problem solve. So we tried to lead every day with that essence with our teachers, with our building administrators and our TAs and aides as well. That's a nutshell of what kind of went on across those days.
How are they feeling about that?
Good. They felt like it was more doable. I think it was, it's just overwhelming. We have people that are really high achievers. It's, that's, the main thing is getting that and some of that and they're feeling like it. So today seemed to be a productive day. We gave them today to just really get ready, you know, continue to get ready. And we tried to do that all the way throughout the week. We teach you something, now go do it. Teach and go do it. And so today, yeah, it's just more logistics today.
Well, and given the circumstances, I think most people were home in the summer. So prior to these days, we had more and regular contact with teachers. I know each of the grade levels came and met at the elementary level several times over the last few weeks. You know, the departments in the middle and high school met. So leading up to these days, there were several meetings that normally wouldn't occur in a normal summer. So the stage was set really well. We also offered optional professional development for two weeks prior to these where people were compensated if they attended, but we offered some PD, teaching and learning in the digital environment, build relationships with kids. So there's been plenty of opportunities. But as Lynn had said, I think our goal is to be proficient with Zoom, be proficient with Google Classroom, because that gets you off the ground and allows you to teach and kids to learn. And then there's more layers to add on later on. And a lot of this stuff, you know, it seemed overwhelming, but this was coming from the grassroots, you know, at Lynn's committee for teaching and learning. The teachers were saying, we want this, or we want to be able to do this. And so Lynn would find the tool or go out and give the license.
Yeah, I knew about CSO. I was a little hesitant to put a new platform on the table because that can either be anxiety-filling or they, they kept coming back, would you please, would you please use that? Yes, yeah, we will do this. And they, our primary teachers feel like they can meet this, their students' needs much better. There was a big sense of relief with them.
Yeah, I think that's where the kudos really go to Lynn in terms of her ability to facilitate this process. You know, the, as administrators or even as teachers, we all don't have the answers individually, but collaboratively, you see what can be put together when people have the time and the opportunity to work together. So she's followed a great process and has been working around the clock. All of these folks have. This team is tremendous. I'm very proud of them and thankful for them. And like Lynn said, we're going to have our bumps and bruises because everyone will, because technology is what it is. But we feel like we're ready for Thursday. Thank you. That's it for this report.
All right, we will need a motion for new business items.
I'll make a motion for new business items, E, 1, A through F, 2, A through D, 3, A through E, G and H.
We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of new business items, E, 1, A through F, 2, A through D, 3, A through E, G and H, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Still, I don't believe we have any follow-up action yet. Okay. We will need then a motion to convene the executive session.
I'll make a motion to convene new executive session for matters regarding employment of a particular person.
Second. All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Patrick.